Everyone, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Jeff Moore, Chris Rupert, Jorge Sotolongo, Matt Tondle, Patrick Morris, Vice Chair, and I'm Michael Pate, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanneslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson, Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table right here in front of us. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases that have been recommended for layover have already been heard or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask anyone who wants the case, if anyone wants the case removed, for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on consent agenda. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that any large group select a spokesman to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has previously been said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all the information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act can be found in the white binder in this room. I don't have any changes to the consent agenda today, so we'll just move forward with the consent items. I'll first read the items that are on the agenda for approval, consent approval. And the first one is Item 3, Case C325182. The applicant is Don Winnett. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from the low-density residential, industrial, and open space to industrial and open space. This was laid over from our July 2, 2025 meeting. The location is 2205 North 88th Street. Does anyone like, would like to have this removed? Next is Item 4, Case C1225108. Applicant is DNE LLC. It's on consent for approval. The request is preliminary plat approval of Walnut Hill Replat 10, a subdivision inside city limits with approval of a waiver to Section 5384A, lot depth, and laid over from our July 2, 2025 meeting as well. The location is 1116 and 1120 North 40th Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item 5, Case C1225179. The applicant is TH McClay Holdings LLC. It's on consent for approval. Request is preliminary and final plat approval of Greco Platt, a minor plat inside city limits with approval of a waiver to Section 5384A, lot depth. And this was laid over from our July 2, 2025 meeting. The location is northeast of 12th and Williams Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed?
I'd like to have that removed.
Okay. That is also with Item 9, so we'll have Item 9 removed as well. Next is Item 7, Case C1025181. The applicant is Don Winnett. It's on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from R2 and GI and GI, laid over from our July 2, 2025 meeting, and the location is 2205 North 88th Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item 8, Case C1125109. Applicant DNE LLC. On consent for approval. Request is approval of a PUR, Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District, and this was also laid over from our July 2, 2025 meeting. And the location is 1116 and 1120, 1120 North 40th Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Okay, 9 will be heard. Item 11, Case C325203.
Mike, did you do 8?
I just did 8.
You just did 8?
Sorry, yeah. Next is Item 11, Case C325203. The applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the disposition of city-owned property located at 5701 North 42nd Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item 12, Case C325204. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. And this request is approval of the disposition of city-owned property located at 4524 Blondo Street. Does anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item 16, Case C1025192, Case C1225193. Applicant FHPS LLC on consent for approval. Request is preliminary and final plat approval of Calarosa Replat 1, a minor plat outside city limits with rezoning from DR, R4, and R5 to DR, R4, and R5. Its location is southeast of 213th Street and Kansas Avenue. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item 17, Case C1025194, Case C1225195. Applicant is Habitat for Humanity of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of 26th and Corby Platt, a minor plat inside city limits along with expansion of the ACI overlay. The location is southeast of 26th and Corby Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed? Okay, this is also, also as a companion, Item Number 22, that will also be pulled off Next is Item 18, Case C325205, Case C1025197, Case C1225198. The applicant is Metropolitan Utilities District. It's on consent for approval. The request is preliminary plat approval of MUD State Street, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, along with approval of a waiver to the PDZ, Present Development Zone. Location is northwest of 195th and State Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item 19, Case C1025199. Applicant is Katie Shanahan on consent for approval. Request is rezoning from R3 to R5. Location is 3908 Chicago Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item C1025202. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. Request is rezoning from R535 to R5. Location is 4038, 4034 Hartman Circle, and 5701 North 42nd Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item 21, Case C1122220. Applicant is Design Eight Studios. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of a major amendment to the PUR, Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location is 3315 South 70th Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item 22, Case C1125196. Applicant Habitat for Humanity of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the PUR, Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location is southeast of 26th Street and Corby Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed? Oh, we took this one off. I'm sorry. Yeah, we already took this one. Okay, next is Item 23, Case C1025201. The applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the ACI Civic Importance Overlay District. Location is 1125, 1121, 1115, 1111, North 18th Street, and 1726 Nicholas Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item 24, Case C1010167. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha on consent for approval. The request is approval of a major amendment to the South 10th Street NCE Neighborhood Conservation Enhancement District. Location is South 10th Street from downtown to Interstate I-80. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item 25, Case C725189. Applicant is Aaron Evans on consent for approval. Request is approval of a conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the R1 District. Location 5275 North 195th Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item 29, Case C1425188. Applicant is Property Owner. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the vacation of an east-west alley abutting Lot 1, Jeter's Addition, Replat 3, lots 1, 2, 3, 6, 7, 12, 13, 14, Block 1, Jeter's Addition to the South Omaha, and lots 1, 2, 3, Mittman Subdivision. The location is southeast of 29th and Q Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed? Okay, those are cases on for consent approval. I'll need, now read cases that we have on for consent layover. First one is Item 6, Case C1025151, Case C1225152. Applicant is Malibu Properties LLC. It's on consent for layover. Request is preliminary and final plat approval of View 2222, a minor plat outside city limits, rezoning from DR to R4 and R6. This was laid over from our June 4, 2025 meeting. Location is southwest of 222nd Street and West Center Road. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is Item C1025190, Case C1225191. The applicant is MRDPLLC on consent for layover. Request is preliminary plat approval of the IDA Grove, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. And this is, location is southwest of 186th Street and Ida Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed? Okay, that completes our consent agenda, so we have several cases on for consent approval. We removed four cases total, so I'd entertain a motion for those cases on consent for approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Tondle?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Thank you. We also have two cases on for layover, and we entertain a motion for those layover cases. Motion and second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondle?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we pulled off a couple of cases here that we'll hear next, and then we'll move into our regular agenda items as well. So the first one we pulled off was, what was that one? Five? Yep, five. Yeah, so the case is C1225179. The applicant is TH McClay Holdings LLC. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of Greco Platt, a minor plat inside city limits with approval of a waiver to Section 5384A, lot depth. This was laid over from July 2, 2025. Location is northeast of 12th and Williams Street. Is the applicant here?
Let's also call it Number 9, too.
Yeah, and you want me to read that one, too?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll also, we'll pull them up together, both. Case, Case, Item 9, which is Case C1125178. Applicant is also TH McClay Holdings LLC. The request is approval of the PUR, Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District, laid over from July 2, 2025. The location northeast of 12th and Williams Street. Applicant here? Anybody, okay, proponents? Come on. And please state your name and address for the record, please.
Matt Smith, representing the owner, One By Two Architecture, 18410 Meredith Avenue, Elkhorn, Nebraska. So, this is a, we work with the Planning Board in the, to kind of work through this project. It's a 10-unit apartment building with a replat on two existing sites that the owner owns. We have been working back and forth. It was put on layover as we continued to work through the kind of street, street parking, street improvements along Williams Street there. So we've gone back through, revised, worked with Public Works to, to come up with a solution that everyone deems to be what is needed for the, the improvements on the property. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to, to help answer.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Hearing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Please come forward.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Dave Hempel with Hempel Sheet Metal Works, and we are on 1255 South 13th Street. And I wrote a letter, and several other folks wrote a letter to you guys in regards to this project, and the, the parking on South 13th Street since the development, which we, we welcome considerably, the new development, but the multi-residential is creating a major parking problem down there. So I'm here today to, to talk to you about it, to see if we can collectively come up with a solution for that so that we can continue forward without this problem. I know that there were some properties across the street the same developer is developing that is an NBD zoning, which means he's exempt from off-street parking, and the neighborhood is really concerned about where these people are going to park, especially on the main thoroughfare of 13th Street. A lot of us industrial businesses down there have been working hard to try to find a way to work, coincide with the new development. We've been there for, Hempel Sheet Metal's been there for 75 years, long time. And like I said, we welcome the new development, but the multi-residential in an area like that is really creating an unsafe environment. I have some pictures of some of the parking now, and I know this is off, off-topic, but there's, there was a 2018 walkability study that was done, and the results of that were that the section of the road would probably never change based on the post office, amount of trucks, the ratio of truck to car traffic. And I have a picture here yesterday with the construction on the street, and I don't know if you guys are going to be able to see this, but...
Just put it on the projector there.
Raise that arm up all the way. Keep going, all the way up. Click it, and then it'll turn on.
That way?
Yeah, it'll just take a minute here. He's pulling up the screen.
Oh, there we go.
And then on the top, you can zoom in and out, so if you could...
Okay.
If you need to.
Well, if you look there, this is right in front of our shop. This is about 4 o'clock in the afternoon I took this. I didn't walk all the way down, but this traffic is bracked up to the bridge. That's past the post office. And the other direction, I didn't really get a picture of that, I don't think, but there, there was an issue there as well. So I'm going to bring up another picture. Now, this is 12th Street behind Williams, or 12th, north of Williams, and this is about 4 o'clock in the afternoon as well. Same, same trip, I took these pictures, visited with some of the neighbors. Some of these neighbors have cones that they put in their yard until, put in time. Then they have to put cones out in front of their driveways to keep people from parking in front of their driveways and stuff. And down on the left side is where the project will be, and there really is not enough room on the street for parking, and I don't think they're going to be able to, in that, there will be no off-street parking there as well. I don't think it's zoned to be exempt from off-street parking, but it's getting worse all the time. And so my, my thought is, is all the properties along 14th Street that they're talking about development, it would be really advantageous if they're going to consider multi-residential to put in a parking garage as a solution to this problem, because safety number one down on 13th Street has been, ever since the BID has been established, and, and it's, it's really starting to get worse. And so we're looking for a solution, and we hopefully can work together to make that happen somehow or another. So...
The first picture you showed, Dave, that's with, you took that...
There's some road construction going on right now, right?
There's road construction, and the reason I took that is because a road diet...
Yeah.
Would, you'd be, and, and you know what? It's the fire department, the rescue people were here because every day, at least three times a day, we have, that's the main thoroughfare for the rescue team to go up and down that street.
Yeah.
So I know that's a future item, but multi-residential will want to bring in a road diet.
Yeah.
Won't work. It's just, it's just not a, not a corridor for that.
But, but I guess my question is, those, part of the reason why those cars were backed up as far as they were, and I realize it's a busy street.
Yeah, it's construction. All I'm trying to do is simulate the future.
Yep.
And, and if, if we think about five years down the road after all these buildings get built, and the sustainability of 13th Street, I know that dense, dense population will bring more traffic into these new businesses, but we're, it's unlike Blackstone or Benson or anywhere else because of all the, the industrial folks down there. And we've been working together to try to work with the team that's bringing this in, but it, number one, we don't get the information. There's no transparency for the neighborhood. If there's going to be construction done, it'd be nice that the developer would give us a vision so that we could figure out a way to work together with him as well. And there's some more industrial folks here today, I'm sure they will like to talk about it, and some of the neighbor, neighboring people, the residential people. So I appreciate your time, and hopefully that we can work together to make something happen.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other opponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon. My name's Sean Colterman with Kim Contractors at 1446 South 13th Street. We're at the corner of 13th and Pine, and wanted to address basically the same things that Dave mentioned with respect to parking and safety. And not to duplicate too much, but that photo definitely shows that there is road construction going on, but that would simulate some of the desires of reducing the four lanes of traffic down to two to accommodate diagonal parking on the sides of the street instead of parallel parking. So the congestion that could potentially get created there is problematic, exacerbated by the fact of 250-plus semis a day, I think, that serve the post office, and those semis that have to take wide turns from the left lane across the right lane to get into the post office when they're traveling north on 13th Street. I've personally been in that situation where people try to dart by the semi, turning right across those lanes of traffic, and seen accidents happen. So it can be an ongoing safety issue with just the traffic. The neighborhood business districts that are, that are basically exempt from parking requirements are problematic, so that's one of the things that we would... requirements are problematic, so that's one of the things that we would oppose, rezoning to provide that NBD designation. The desire would be to have some kind of coordination with the developer so that we could address a solution to the problem, not just talk about the problems. So for instance, the parking garage would be a great idea if we could work to figure out how to do that. There's a new apartment building that got placed right across the street from my office at 13th and Pine, has 24 parking stalls for 59 apartments, and so that's already creating some parking problems. We've had Park Omaha down to look at the area, and they're actually talking about reducing street parking that we have, which is going to exacerbate the problem further for our employees for loading trucks and trailers that we need to operate our business out of the space there at 13th and Pine. So the two things that I would see, I'd echo what Dave mentioned about the parking garage, and hopefully finding an opportunity to create one of those. I know that when I spoke with McClay in the past, he's told me about his Blackstone development where the city leased out the parking structure, and that seems to have been a good arrangement. So hopefully something like that is a workable solution going forward. But then the second thing would be something to slow the pace of traffic without slowing the volume of traffic on 13th Street, maybe reconsidering adding a couple of stop signs or adding a couple of additional stoplights, just so we can slow the pace to accommodate, improve safety for pedestrians. And obviously, more multifamily development on the, in the area is going to create more pedestrian traffic. So figuring out a way to slow down the pace of that traffic without reducing its volume would be helpful for managing safety for all those additional pedestrians in the neighborhood.
John, a question. So you mentioned there was apartment, I don't remember where you said, where you had 29 stalls for, I think it was 59 units? Where was that at exactly?
So it's directly to the north. So it's also at 13th and Pine. I think it's called Little Boho Flats, or Little Bohemia Flats. And it's 24 parking stalls in their garage for 59 units, plus they have retail on the main level, and I presume those retail businesses would also be interested in having places for their customers to park.
Right, but my question for you is, so you said that's caused some issues. What kind of issues have you seen as a result of that? Just curious.
So people parking on Pine Street has caused similar problems like Dave mentioned for the residents on 12th Streets and 14th Street where people are blocking the driveways, and they get closed into their own property. We have our north yard on that side of the street where we have to load trucks and trailers, and sometimes we can't even get into our yard to make the turn because of the additional vehicles that are parked out there on Pine Street. Park Omaha came out, did an initial survey, said they're going to put no parking signs up entirely on 13th Street, excuse me, on Pine Street as it approaches, in between 13th and 14th Streets. No parking that whole stretch, so that...
On either side?
Kind of creates an even bigger conundrum about where people are going to park. So they're also talking about doing restricted parking, so it would be like a loading zone between seven and five. So that might work out to be a little bit more accommodating to both us operating our business as well as people who need to park in those off-hours. But I haven't heard back from Richard or Hannah yet about what the revised solution might be. But taking away even more parking is going to be even more difficult.
Has it gotten to the point, or like, do any of these property owners, if they're truly blocked in all the way, has anyone tried just calling it a tow company?
Yeah, I don't know. Dave has had more contact with the residents of the neighborhood, and there's somebody else here to speak about that.
I mean, you do that once or twice, maybe somebody doesn't do that anymore.
And hopefully you're not in a hurry to get out of your own driveway while waiting for a tow truck, right?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
We had the same issue. We brought it up in city planning. City planning said it would be addressed by city council with the apartment building next door to us, because their entrance to their garage is directly across from the entrance to our yard. And so if we're loading truck and trailer there, even though it only takes 30 minutes typically for us to be in and out, that's 30 minutes where people can't get in and out of that parking garage very effectively. So just trying to figure out how we can get ahead of it this time, instead of being behind the curve, and potentially work together to think through and solve the problems in advance of the construction.
Sure.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Are there any other opponents that wish to speak?
Guess maybe I'm a little taller than they are. Rick Hollinger, I'm with Chicago Lumber Company of Omaha. Our main headquarters is 1324 Pierce, so it'd be on the corner of 14th and Pierce. We have warehouse space all along 14th Street, so we are just a block off Main 13th Street. You know, the lifeblood of our company has been our history. Next year, we 150 years in business in Omaha. So we were established in 1876 on 7th and Douglas, so we've had a long commitment to being in the downtown, and have committed to be there with new warehouses and built in 20, or 2000, and then one in 2014. We, the lifeline of our business is development, so I'm kind of torn with this statement up here. So we've done a number of projects in the downtown area, based on our location. We're really convenient, and we've worked with the developer before as well on numerous projects. My big goal here is just to tell you, the lifeline of our business is getting trucks in and out. We send semi trucks two a day out and back. We have six other trucks that are 26-footers that the main access is to the interstate to some of the development that isn't in the downtown, which would be called West Omaha, right? So we've been committed to the downtown, committed to the development of the downtown. Haven't planned on going anywhere, but my big issue is safety, trucks, traffic, and safety, and then the lifeline to the interstate with the main thoroughfare of 13th Street, so we can continue to be a prosperous business like we have when we used to deliver lumber to the downtown in horse and buggy. And if you ever want to come look at the drawings, I have those for you. But we have adapted over the years as well, and parking and traffic and safety would be my main concern from where we're at.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Any other opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Bluvus, and I live at 824 Worthington Avenue, which is up the street. But as a child, my grandmother would take me on 13th Street, she lived on 14th, and my cousin still lives in the family house, to the candy store. So I'm well aware of 13th Street and parts of 14th Street, and the value that some of these longtime businesses have added to the neighborhood and to the city. I'm also with the Dahlman Neighborhood Group, which encompasses the area. We welcome growth in the area, but we'd like to have growth working together with the established businesses regarding parking, traffic, and all that. So I agree with the guys have said. It seems right now that new development down along there is anything goes. Somebody buys a lot, and they put something up, and we have to live with it. In regard to traffic, when I leave my house and come down to 10th Street, I figured, which way am I going to go? We now have a four-way stop on 10th and Martha, and traffic would use to come up Martha, and they could go faster. Now you have to stop if people stop. And there are days that I just won't even drive 13th Street because the traffic is bad. Or if I'm coming over up 13th Street south from the South Omaha Bridge, it's lined up already. So it's bad. I agree with the things that the gentlemen have said, and please help us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, are there any other opponents that wish to speak? Not Matt, you want to come up and maybe address the, it sounds like mainly parking and traffic issues that might be caused by development?
Yeah, so with this specific development, it's on 12th and Williams. So what we were doing along Williams Street is currently it's parallel parking. So obviously, there, we do know on that street, it's pretty, people drive up and down there pretty quickly. So we're proposing, just like was done on the project just to the west, is to add angled parking along there, as well as, there's, I think, three parallel spots that will be maintained along 12th Street. So with this specific project, there'll be, it's a 10-unit, smaller building, and then there's 10 spots that are being provided on the street. Obviously, it can't be reserved or anything like that, but these will be adding to the amount of parking spaces that are in that specific vicinity for this specific project that's on the, on the agenda today.
So of those 10 spots, those angled parking spots that you're proposing, how many parking spots would that typically be if there was just vertical parking or parallel parking?
I believe there was six parallel there, and then I think we're adding seven angled along Williams, and then there's three along 12th that will be kind of, not for this project, but as part of that one-to-one ratio. Actually, no, sorry. We, we have the two single-family homes, too, so there's actually 12 total spots, or 13 spots, because there's a garage, too. So there's, so there actually is 10. I misspoke, along Williams. So there's about room for, I think, six parallel spots along the street there, right at Williams, at the corner of 12th and Williams. So, so all of that improvement would be part of this project to be approved, so.
Got it, okay. Great. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah.
All right, without close of the public hearing, any questions at all? Matt, Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, you know, quite a few comments regarding parking concerns, traffic, NBD zoning. Yes, so there are other components of this project that were recommended for approval at last month's planning board. Those were generally west of 13th Street, and those have a different designation in the future land use map that is within a mixed-use area for properties along 13th Street, as well as areas further to the west of 14th Street and north and south of, generally of Williams Street. So the two agenda items on today's planning board agenda are specifically for the 12th and William project, which is not being rezoned to NBD. But I acknowledge that there are other components and phases of this project that were previously heard by the board, as well as with the TIF application, and all the plattings and rezonings and TIF are currently going through the entitlement process, and will go to city council as well. So, but specifically, as we sit here with the agenda item, the proposed project is meeting the one-to-one parking-to-unit ratio that is supported by the city of Omaha with these types of infill projects, with the additional diagonal parking put on that the representative just spoke here on Williams Street, as well as parallel stalls and one garage. That being said, you know, we would, planning department, members of Park Omaha, Traffic Division of Public Works, we can absolutely sit down and help facilitate, and with the BID and business owners and residents, as well as this developer and any others that are doing work in the area to, you know, try to coordinate, we can help facilitate that. Of course, we encourage direct conversations with the applicants and the surrounding neighborhood and business owners. So, you know, we're here to help have that conversation. It's just hard for me to elaborate on NBD zoning when that, that's not today on the agenda, but I do acknowledge that that is part of this overall project and other projects that have happened in the area. So, but we're here to have conversations and just help facilitate that. So, you know, if those business owners want to help coordinate that, and they can reach out to us, and we can try to get everybody in the room and have conversations about, you know, what the, with the existing zoning, with the existing future land use map, any potential changes moving forward, you know, we can have that conversation. But as we sit here today for the agenda items five and nine, it is consistent with what we have recommended approval and what city council has ultimately approved regarding parking ratios for, you know, these types of sites in the city. So I don't know if you have any further questions. We do have members of Public Works here with the traffic section that, you know, can speak to that. You know, I'm not aware of any new or recent conversations regarding a road diet. I know there's, it's been looked at in the past along 13th Street, but, you know, I can't speak specifically to that.
The only thing I'd say is, I'm glad you brought up the fact that this is, you know, related to this specific items, number five and nine, you know, it does meet their city's requirements for that. As long, as far as ongoing conversations, I think that's going to be important for the business district and the city to continue to have, and Public Works as well. Obviously, there seems to be some issues with some, some traffic in the area, and you don't want to affect the businesses that are located, that have been there a long time, too, in that area, and force them to move. But, but I'm glad you brought up the fact that this is related to this particular, these items, five and nine, and meets the city's requirements.
Yeah, and you know, this is a unique area. There is a combination of existing industrial zoning, obviously industrial users and operations that have been there for a long time, and then there's obviously commercial zoning and, you know, the future land use map, which there's also been quite a bit of recent multifamily residential. So city acknowledges that, and sometimes that does bring challenges when you intermix those uses and zoning types. I'll read the recommendation. You can continue to ask questions or have conversations, but for agenda item five, the city recommends approval of the waiver to section 5384A for lot depth, approval of the preliminary plat subject to seven conditions in the report, and approval of the final plat subject to submit of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion? Or not?
Motion to approve the waiver to section 5384A lot depth, approve the preliminary plat subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Tondel? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Thank you.
Regarding agenda item nine, which is the PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district for this same site, staff recommends approval of the PUR overlay district subject to submitting final acceptable plans prior to city council.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the PUR overlay district subject to submitting acceptable final PUR development plan prior to forwarding the request to city council.
May we have a motion and a second? Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Tondel? Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Thank you. Thanks for your input. Really do appreciate you coming out and spending some time. I'm sure the city, if you get with the city, I'll be glad to have a dialogue with you to continue the discussions on traffic. Thank you. Okay, next is a couple other items that were pulled off of the consent agenda items. First one is item number 17, case C-10 25194, C-12 25195. Applicant is Habitat for Humanity of Omaha. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of 26th and Corby Platte, minor plat inside city limits, along with expansion of the ACI overlay. Location is southeast of 26th and Corby Streets. And item number 22, which is case C-11 25196, applicant is also Habitat for Humanity of Omaha. The request is approval of the PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location is southeast of 26th and Corby Streets. May we hear from the applicant? Is the applicant here? Please.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Scott Los, 10836 Old Mill Road, TD2 Engineering and Surveying, here on behalf of the applicant. We are asking for a layover to the September board meeting to give us time to relook at the site. Habitat for Humanity has to really look at feasibility of things, and their, their goal is to get as much development, or as many houses in as they can that works with, with the city's vision for this site. So we want to look at maybe adding a couple more lots, so we want to pull the... So we want to look at maybe adding a couple more lots, so we want to pull that from the agenda this week and get it laid over, and come back with a new plan that we'll submit soon, so that the staff has time to review it before September's meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wish to speak on this? Are there any opponents? CNN will close the public hearing. Eric?
Staff does not have any opposition. Obviously, if the applicant thinks they need to take a fresh look, then we'd be fine with the layover. So, for agenda item 17, staff recommends layover.
Do I have a motion? Okay, Kathy, you have a motion and a second. Please record the vote.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
For agenda item 22, staff recommends layover.
Do I have a motion? Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All righty, now now move into the regular board agenda items. The first two items are going to be administrative meeting only, which mean there will be no public testimony on these items. Now, there's two items on the, on the administrative agenda. First one is item one, KC 1024253, C 1224254. The applicant is Lanahaw Real Estate. Request is final plat approval of Elkhorn Center, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4 and MU, and location is east of 204th and Shirley Streets. Eric?
Yeah, so the proposed final plat is consistent with the approved revised preliminary plat that was heard by city council on June 17th. The project includes 95 lots, nine outlots. The applicant has continued to coordinate with the state of Nebraska Department of Transportation, as well as Public Works regarding several comments and access from 204th Street. There will be some, some language and some final coordination required for the mixed-use development agreement, as well as the subdivision agreement. So staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4 and MU, subject to submission of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement prior to city council, as well as approval of the final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Any questions, comments? Not, do I have a motion?
Motion to rezone from AG to R4 and MU, subject to submission of an acceptable mixed-use district development agreement in compliance with all applicable regulations prior to forwarding the request to city council, and approval of the final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council.
Okay, do you have a second? Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the administrative meeting is item two, KC 1023133, C 1223134. The applicant is Habitat for Humanity of Omaha. Request is final plat approval of Blue Stem Prairie, Second Edition, lots 65 through 106, and outlots G through H and K through N, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from DR to DR and R5. The location is northeast of 50th Street and Newport Avenue. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the second phase of Blue Stem Prairie, Second Edition. The final plat for Phase One was approved by city council on March 11th of this year, which included 64 total lots and nine outlots. This would replat the remaining lots for a total of 106 residential lots. There are a few items that will need to be finalized regarding some adjacent properties and vacations of, of rights away, as well as administrative plating, so those will be, need to be coordinated in this moving forward to city council. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from DR to DR and R5, and approval of the final plat subject to submission acceptable final subdivision agreement in addressing the four conditions in the recommendation report prior to city council.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval of the rezoning from DR to DR and R5, approval of the final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement in addressing the following four items prior to forwarding the request to city council for final action.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
Thank you. All right, that completes the administrative part of the meeting. Next is the regular agenda items. First one is item 10, KC 325200. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. The request is approval of Grover ALMC TIF redevelopment project plan. Location is 3425 South 70th Street. Don, please.
Yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. The Grover ALMC, that stands for Assisted Living Memory Care, TIF project, Tax Increment Financing Project, is located on Grover, near 72nd Street. It's on a site that was formerly part of the Cocoa Keys Resort, that was there for many years. The proposal is for a new assisted living memory care multifamily residential development for seniors. It'll be built on a three-acre parcel. Building will be three stories in height and will have 100 residential units. I would note, we're looking at a plan for the parking lot and the donut-shaped building. This building would be a future development. It's not included in the TIF application that you're reviewing today. Total investment in the project is about $30 million. The TIF support requested is $3,300,113. The developer is Grover AMLC LLC and Related Investors, and this is managed by Brett West. This project meets the criteria of our TIF program. It's been approved by the TIF committee. It's an appropriate land use for the area, and we ask for your approval.
Okay, thank you, Don. Are there any other proponents wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Be a proponent or opponent?
Proponent.
Proponent, please come on.
Yeah. I'm for this thing. I'm Brett West, the developer on the project. So, yeah, I'm here to speak on behalf of our project. So, here to answer any questions. We're also involved in the parallel, the project right next door to the apartment, so we're sitting in that project and looking next door. I thought, well, that seems like a good place for assisted living and memory care. We have one out at Echo Hills, Echo Park, right behind Sap Brothers on 144th and Chandler, so this would be our second location in the community. We have another one in Lincoln as well. So we're really excited to bring seniors to the middle of town. That's definitely underserved market, market study, supported over 300 units, and so we're going to try to take some of that off of the, the plate here. Certainly, the memory care is kind of tucked underneath in the third wing, and that has been across the, the market very much in need. So 80 assisted living, 20 memory care. The great part about this TIF, unlike the other apartments, what I'm a part of, is there's 60 people that'll work here full-time. So not only getting residents, you're getting jobs. So we're very happy to bring forward a TIF request and happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question for you, Brett.
Yep.
And maybe I'm just not understanding it, but your rental rate information on here, like a studio that's 250 square feet goes for $7,500 per month.
Yep.
But a two-bedroom that's 1,000 square feet goes for $7,500 a month.
I think there's probably a typo in there. That's probably my error, but, yeah, it's a full functioning, so it's three meals a day. Yep. Most residents are getting treatment from one through six, some sort of additional care.
Got you. I get that the rates are going to be much higher.
Sorry about that, yeah. It's about $5,000, I believe, for this.
Well, I guess I would jump in. The top two line items for the rent are probably the memory care units.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You're probably looking at the assisted living, and then memory care also has a studio, then those would be a different price point.
I got you.
So, not knowing what you're looking at, but.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Okay, thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Not a close of public hearing? Eric, please.
Yes, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
Thank you. All right, next is item 13, KC 322059, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. His request is approval of an amendment to the Urban Core Housing and Mobility Redevelopment Project Plan. The location is an area generally bound by Cumming Street to the north, and Woolworth Avenue to the south, and Missouri River to the east, and 50th Avenue to the west. Jennifer, are you speaking to this?
Thank you, my apologies, a little multitasking there. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department, 1819 Farnham. Before you today is an amendment to the Urban Core Housing and Mobility Redevelopment Plan. As we discussed earlier today, and as you, most of you are aware, since you were on the board when we passed this to begin with, in spring of 2022, this board recommended approval, and the city council adopted an Urban Core Housing and Mobility Redevelopment Plan for the Urban Core District. The purpose of this redevelopment plan was to identify a tax increment financing district and a plan for funding a number of different redevelopment projects within the city's urban core. Primarily, in the original plan, the project identified was the construction of a modern streetcar. So the plan identified and identified a funding mechanism to design, construct, maintain, and operate a modern streetcar system that extends generally from the Blackstone, UMC area down to the river and back. Number of reasons for this particular redevelopment project were outlined in the plan, and Mr. Jensen, I think, can probably answer some additional questions about that. That plan specifically identified and funded the streetcar. However, as part of that plan, we also identified affordable housing and other mobility projects as being a goal for the use of some tax increment financing revenues generated within the district, and as being ideal projects for the urban core. At the time, we did not have specifically identified affordable housing or mobility projects aside from the streetcar. What this amendment does is, in compliance with state law, amends our original plan to specifically identify additional projects for the core with which we will fund with tax increment financing revenues. Those projects are specifically set forth in this amendment. First and foremost, you have, outlined for you a program to fund affordable housing within the district. Secondly, we've identified protected bikeways and some connectivity with metro and other transportation elements within the city's core that we will fund as part of the use of these revenues. So, the affordable housing project has come to the city's attention. We have the opportunity to access up to $40 million in funding from a private, private source, with which we can use within the urban core redevelopment plan, redevelopment area, so within the district that we've identified in the plan. So what we have the opportunity to do here is to access $40 million and fund affordable housing within the city's urban core. One of the key goals to the original plan, and I think really a great opportunity that we are, are presenting here. That will be funded, again, like I said, through bonds issued to a private entity that will be funding this. The projects will be funded through the assistance of Front Porch. Front Porch has a similar program that they currently use in partnership with the city, where they fund through redevelopment, through low-interest loans. They assist the development of affordable housing. This will be a similar program to what Front Porch does with the city currently with ARPA Funds. ARPA Funds, where's Jody? Oh, there's Jody, okay. With ARPA Funds. So it's an exciting opportunity for the city. The bonds that, just for anyone's curiosity, the bonds that we will issue to fund this portion of the project will be nonrecourse to the city and subordinate to the streetcar financing. So the streetcar financing is obviously paramount, but the ability to fund affordable housing is something that we have always projected we could do with the TIF revenues to be generated in the district. This allows us, this, this particular arrangement will allow us to fund that affordable housing now, and not have to wait until those revenues materialize in like early 2030, 31, 32. The great thing about that is that we can take advantage of opportunities to develop and put that housing in place today, and not have to wait until seven or eight or nine years from now, when maybe those opportunities, the, the buildings, the land, et cetera, might not be available to us. So it's a great opportunity for the city. We were able to identify this project. In addition to, now that we've got the streetcar route settled, opportunities to connect the streetcar to other transportation networks within the city. What this plan does is identify those specific projects and identify that we can fund them with the tax group financing revenues generated in the district. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak to this?
Steve Jensen, Deputy Chief of Staff for Economic Development, Mayor Ewing's office. This is a great opportunity, as Jennifer said, something we've always looked forward to being able to talk about with, when we first started on the streetcar. Our expectation was that the streetcar would really increase the density and the value of development within the urban core. And we, we believed that that would generate more money in terms of TIF than what we needed to construct the streetcar. We always expected to be able to use that money then for affordable housing, bikeways, and other mobility improvements. We're excited that we have a, a donor who's come forward and allowed us to accelerate that development. So rather than waiting maybe six years or more to get started, and then maybe 10 years or more before we had the money available to do this work, this allows us to get started now, and, and the need is great, so we're anxious to get started. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Obviously, we talked a lot in the, in the pre-meeting about this, and you gave us some great information, both of you gave us some great information about this project, and, and I think it's important for people, a lot of people don't quite understand, I don't think, what this streetcar is capable of providing in terms of economic development, and I think it's very, very important that people get some information with regards to that. But it's also important for, for the redevelopment of our urban core as well, and for affordable housing as well going forward. So I think this is great, what we're trying to do with, with that respect to all those things, and we appreciate the work that the city's gone through to get us to this point, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Hello?
Hi, good afternoon. Jody Holston, Front Porch Investments, 148 South 39th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And we are excited to be able to partner with the city of Omaha on this initiative for $40 million to support affordable and workforce housing in the urban core. This is building on a previous partnership with the city. As Jennifer had mentioned, with our previous ARPA partnership, so far to date from 2022, we've invested over $36 million in affordable housing in Omaha with that initiative, supporting 2,100 homes, over 1,600 of those are affordable. So we're excited to do the same thing with this program and continue to target workforce and affordable housing, and particularly in the urban core, as those areas begin to see increasing development, ensuring that we're protecting affordable housing for Omaha. Happy to take any questions.
Great. Thanks for your partnership.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. So, do you think that funds for affordable housing will go direct to developers that are renting back to homeowners versus actual homeownership for the low-income applicants?
Yeah, so all of it would be for developers who are building either for sale or rental housing, both of those are eligible expenses, so it's really depends on the projects that we see. Currently, we've seen more rental than homeownership, but they're both eligible.
How do you regulate if they're renting the property? How are you going to regulate the rental rates to the, to the homeowners then?
So we issue a 20-year land use restriction on any property that receives funding to ensure that those units are protected, and then we have ongoing monitoring for 20 years, making sure that those rents stay affordable.
Thanks, Jody.
Thanks, Jody.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Jennifer Taylor, just to add to Jody's comment there and further answer your question, we also set up with these programs that if, for some reason, they fail to meet those requirements under the law and the ongoing monitoring, that then they are responsible for either penalties or repaying or, you know, a full amount of the loan back. So, there are some remedies in place as well.
Good protection. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Jennifer. Any other questions? If not, close the public hearing? Oh, proponent. Do we have any opponents? Sorry. Thank you. All right. See you now. Close the public hearing, Eric.
Obviously, it's a great program. City's excited. I don't think I need to say more than what Jennifer, Steve, and Jody already said, so staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Have a motion and a second. Please, Kathy, please record the vote.
Rupert? Morris?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Thank you. Thank you all. Next is item 14, KC 325 206, Applicants Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, requests approval of the 2026 to, through 2031 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. Location is City of Omaha in the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Go ahead.
Good to see you again. Good to see you again, board.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Should be coming up. There we go. Okay. My name is Joe Caniglio, City of Omaha Planning Department. There we go. This is obviously the presentation you saw this morning at pre-app, so we will quickly go over through, overview the, this year's draft for 2026. A quick description, the CIP is organized into five functional areas, transportation, environment, parks and rec, public safety, and facilities. The goals are listed below, and they are related towards our master plan, which we are currently trying to update. The process says February, but it kind of starts in January, getting the ball rolling with the respective departments. And me, as the coordinator, scramble all of the budgets and all the departments on what they want to see in this year's CIP. So, that goes all, all the way through winter to spring, to where we finalize the budget by late April, early May, and then finalize the actual draft just this past couple of weeks, past July. So, here we are now in the approval process. Within the CIP, this is how you read the different projects and how they are funded, and where these funding sources are coming from. This year, we had five new projects, which is a little rare. We usually have more than that, but they all stem from the transportation sector. The first two are interstate resurfacing. We are working with the state on that. The following are mostly on Fort Street, widening that to two lanes to four lanes, also repaving that as well, and then on 156th Street as well. So, those are scheduled to be completed in 2031. Two projects were removed, also within the transportation sector, Douglas Street Bridge and then the West Papio Creek Bridge. 14 projects were completed in this, in this year or in the past, past year. These projects, whether they're completed or not, right now, they could be completed by the end of the year, so that's something to note. A lot of these are parks, parks projects that we got funding through ARPA. We use that money to make minor improvements on our community's parks. The end of the list is transportation projects and just improvements on those intersections. We have four maps and the following slides. You can see the Fort Street improvements underway. The, if you want to look at, look at it yourself, the three last digits are the three digits for the project. So, that's how you look at that. Environment, there's 14 ongoing citywide projects that deal with our city sewer system that are constantly ongoing and being funded. As with parks, 17 in that community, or in that, in that source, I should say. Seven were completed, no new projects this year. So, that was that. And then public facilities, eight planned. CHI is close to completion. We have a downtown fire station, police precinct that is underway. We don't quite have a location for that quite yet. And then the two fire stations out west are undergoing as well. And then the two parking division programs that are constantly in the CIP every year, and then the citywide building renovations. Then lastly, we'll go through three tables looking at all of the money sources. This one shows sources of revenue through our six-year capital budget. As you can see, the sewer revenue improvement program takes up a big chunk of that. Table two shows a six-year capital budget by functional area. So, with that sewer environment, has that big chunk of money there. And then transportation, which stems from, you can see here, two categories, transportation bonds and then street preservation bonds. So, there's that split there that shows that. And these are all GO bonds, so transportation takes a big chunk of that. So, I'm here to answer any further questions, as with Derek here. And thank you for your time.
You showed, you showed, I think, some of the funds that were being used. You said ARPA funds were being used for some project?
Yes, for the interstate resurfacing.
Okay. And, and how much of, how much of ARPA funds?
We usually do a 20% match, and then the state does 80.
Okay. And has that money run out after a certain time? Do you have more money to, to spend from the ARPA funds that were received?
Oh, you're, oh, you're, you're talking about the ARPA funds, yeah. So, that was not used on transportation. Those were most of the parked projects.
Oh, I missed that.
Yeah, so those, all that funding has been allocated and spent.
It all has been now.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
With what again? I'm confused now.
We can bring Public Works up to answer that question. Austin, do you want to help answer? The local match? Sorry, there's hundreds of projects within the CIP, so.
Yeah, but there is no local match on interstate. It's, I mean, on the, in the CIP, it says future transportation bonds, 46 million. Am I reading this wrong?
No, that's correct. So, there, there is a match on those two projects, and we've been matching quite a few NDOT projects over the last several years. So, we do match it with, with GO transportation bonds.
Okay. That can't be the match, though.
No, that's not the match. That's just the, the total future allocation. No, that'd be, that'd be a big match.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can follow up with the specific information. Sorry, we don't have that at the tip of our fingertips here.
Sorry about that confusion.
No, good. All right. Any other questions? Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? See you now. Close the public hearing.
I would just add that, you know, this is a very extensive project or process over the course of several months, led by our long-range section and, and working in close coordination with the finance department, mayor's office, and, of course, all multiple city departments. So, there's a lot of work that goes into this and aligns with the mayor's proposed budget. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Eric. Okay. We have a recommended. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Thank you. Thanks for all the work the city went through, and I know it's a comprehensive plan and a well-done job, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is item 26, KC 723 121. Applicant is Hy-V Inc. Request is approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow warehousing and distribution limited in the CC District. The location is 5710 South 144th Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Randy Downs. I'm with Hy-V, 5820 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa 50266.
Did you say your name is Ray?
I'm sorry.
Your first name is Ray?
Randy Downs, D-O-W-N-S.
Okay.
This was a conditional use permit that this board approved. I'm, I'm sorry to bring the date with me, a year and a half, at least, a year, a year and a half ago. And the operation actually opened Monday of this week, and it is operating now for our e-commerce grocery shopping, where shoppers place an order online. Inside that building at that facility is a robotic system that picks all the items, and, and there's, there's pickers, there's workers there that sack it all up and bag it and put it in, in the certain totes, and then there's delivery trucks that take it to the store. The consumer comes to the store and picks it up. We've been approached by a third-party vendor, as well as in our, internally, we're trying to satisfy the one-hour delivery system that most of our competition is providing now, Walmart, other grocery stores, et cetera. So, this is, this revision to the, the amendment to the CUP is to satisfy the 24-hour service, and it would be, again, by a third-party vendor out of this facility.
Is this a third-party vendor you've worked with before? Sorry.
We have a nondisclosure agreement with that group right now during this due diligence period, so I, I can't really comment on that.
I'm, I'm not asking who they are. I'm just asking if you're, have you partnered with them before?
I don't know for sure. I'm not part of the operations team and then the legal department. But I did want to point out that this facility, I brought the site plan. So, we revised this building and this shaded areas where we put the new dock doors in. That's where the delivery trucks that go out to the stores take the orders. The existing two-door loading dock on the old SuperSaver store, they still function where all the material comes in from our warehouse or direct, direct delivery from the suppliers. And all of our employees enter a door that's approximately right here on the site plan. And I'm going to change the building elevations and that east building facade of the existing facility. This door is where all of our employees enter and exit today for this, the operation the way it operates today. The third-party vendor, in their proposed layout of the internal space, all their people would enter this other existing door, clear the south end, close to the building wall with the U-Haul storage facility. And again, a 24-hour operation, try to satisfy those orders within one hour. My understanding, they have drivers on staff or gig-type workers that would run the deliveries from here out to the stores. All the traffic would be in that front parking lot, and they would exit to the street at the traffic signal. They deliver directly to the consumer.
Okay. All right. That's what I was, I was thinking.
Our facility today, delivering to the stores, all of our stores are only open, I think, 5:00 or 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So, it's, it's limited hours today was part of our operational statement at that time when we asked for the original conditional use permit.
So, this third-party vendor that you're going to be using, smaller vehicles or, or the, or, you know, is it vans that, you know, have six or seven different deliveries in them, or what's the size of vehicles?
I, I don't know, but I think the majority of them are gig workers, where they're just hired, as people can pick up orders and, and do.
Gig worker, I, I, like Uber, like Uber.
And people use their own cars. I know in my neighborhood, especially on Sunday mornings, I see a lot of vehicles coming with the Amazon delivery, and the people are getting out of their personal vehicles, but they have their vest on.
And where will, where will they pick up the groceries from on that side back where you originally said?
They, the, the, these delivered, the 24 hours, they would come and go out of this door, and they'd all have a, this, this door here today is a keypad, similar to what I have here today with me, to get in and out of the building, and they would have a separate key card.
So, they just walk in, say, "I'm here for the Smith order," and walk, walk it back out to their car, and away they go, or roughly?
There's some kind of a pickup station. I don't know the specifics of it, but they have a separate system, and internally, they don't mix. There's a dividing wall inside to separate the.
Do you see, since this would be 24 hours, more semi-deliveries at, at all times of the, of all those 24 hours, would that, would that be more semi-deliveries?
Yeah, yes. I think we, in our amended letter, said it would be probably additional two to three semis a week for supplies.
Two to three a week or a day?
A week. So, these grocery supplies, supplies come in, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring you pictures of it, but inside this building is a floor-to-ceiling warehouse machine where robots store all the products stored in baskets, unorders entered. The conveyor system brings all those baskets to the picker. They pick out of the bin. I need one shampoo. I need one whatever item, and it puts it back in the storage. So, that's what's inside the facility. So, there's a tremendous amount of inventory in here.
So, the dock bays are for deliveries coming into the facility versus loading them up with deliveries to private systems?
Again, the two to three semi, additional semis per week is bringing in the, the goods to, to put into the, to the system to satisfy the orders.
And then the going-out deliveries are going through the, what is it, the east elevation?
The delivery drivers would come and go out of this south door.
Okay.
So, the additional two to three trucks are coming in your normal business hours right now, or within the 24-hour span? Is that what you're requesting?
I don't know those exact hours yet. I wish somebody from the operations team would have been here with me, but I don't know that for sure. The staffing of our facility today is, I think it's 4:00 a.m. is the earliest anybody's here, so those deliveries obviously couldn't come before 4:00 a.m. I think the, the hours today is 4:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., if I'm not mistaken.
And the reason I'm asking is to, to determine whether there's going to be additional truck noise activity outside of the hours that we approved last time. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I understand.
It sounds like your, your 24-hour service is to provide that extra time for consumers, if you're going direct to consumers.
Yeah. It's, 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 it's compete with our competition, and it's this ever, I have to look at my notes, it's the increasing, you know, the desire for a consumer to get their stuff now.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's what it is. They said most of these orders are probably going to be two or three items. It's going to be in a plastic Hy-V bag. So, again, I don't know if a driver will take multiple orders. I don't know this, their system, if it's smart enough to know a zone, and it's just going to depend on when those people place that order.
Yeah.
Because they, the goal is to satisfy within an hour.
So, the only 24-hour access will be through that door?
Correct. And it, and again, it doesn't get into the, the area that Hy-V operates today for our e-commerce grocery store deliveries. They're separate facilities.
Randy, did you say that the Hy-V employees at that center are, are still 4:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., or?
I apologize. I didn't bring my original operation statement. I believe those are ours. I'm going off the top of my head. I don't, if planning can look at, if they have anything with them, the original operations where that CUP was approved.
So, it sounds really, based on the operational statement here, the big increase is going to be people on that east side, the gig driver, drivers coming in and out. But there are also going to be 30 to 40 additional box trucks that will be transporting deliveries from this location to other Hy-V retail locations.
That's what's happening today.
And that's already happening today?
Correct. That started on Monday.
Gotcha.
And I was there this, this, during lunch hour, and I saw one truck come during the 45-minute period. He was returning, empty. That's all I saw, the one truck between 12:45 and about 1:15.
Do you have this anywhere else in other cities?
We have one facility in the Des Moines Metro, but it's not operating yet. And that's got some complexities on itself because it's of access for this third-party. We're trying to figure out how the heck we get people into a secure facility.
Yeah.
And I think in our operational statement, or I think somebody from planning had called about additional information. According to the third-party vendor, they said they would probably have reserved 24 parking stalls out front, probably put signage up in that first bay of parking to the south. Then that common drive that comes in off of the, off the street there on 144th comes in and shared with U-Haul. They probably have designated parking spots for their workers to come and go.
Well, you got plenty of parking there.
That's not a problem.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Randy. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? See you none. I will close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, you know, I don't have much to add. Obviously, it's commercial zoning. It's not uncommon if this was a regular retailer or grocery store, you know, to have 24-hour service. So, we believe the impact would be very minimal to the surrounding neighborhood, and staff recommends approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit, subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report.
Thank you, Eric. Okay. Any questions? I'm sorry. No opponents. No. Okay, no other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow warehousing and distribution in the CC District, subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondal? Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Great, thank you. All right. Next item is item 27, KC 724 099. Applicant is Car Wash Store LLC. Request is approval of a major amendment to conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC Community Commercial District. Property is located in an MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location is 14445 West Center Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an outdoor play area for a new facility that opened in February of 2025 called Kids Indoor Play Place. They did a They did a survey of their customers, and almost 90% said that they would like an outdoor area as well. The indoor area is about 30,000 square feet, again, opened in February of 2025. The outdoor area that you can see there, I need to zoom out, would be about 8,700 square feet. You can see that there, it is accessed only from the inside of the facility, which is a controlled-access facility. The outdoor area would not increase the capacity of the facility, they would still limit the overall, the total capacity at any one time to the same as they limit it now. You can see there's not sports courts out there, there's not going to be bouncing balls or things like that. There is play equipment, the yellow is umbrellas where parents can sit, work on their laptop, do whatever they might do there too while their kids are out there playing. My client held two neighborhood meetings, some neighbors, I think, are here who live adjacent there to the south of this facility, in fact, if I zoom out a little bit more, right there, you can see just the corner of one of the neighbor's homes. They raised concerns about noise and seeing kids outside playing, so the client has, the applicant has added the trees there, you can see, I'll put up a zoomed-in view of the trees as well in a second here, but you can also see the fence, the blue there, and that fence will have a material on it that is a fabric that is a noise attenuating, as well as a visual attenuating fabric. As you can see here, the trees are quite a visual barrier and would provide a good sound barrier as well. Again, we have a few adjacent neighbors who may come up with concerns about this, I want to note though also that the neighborhood to the north across center, Harvey Oaks reached out to the applicant, saying what fans they are of this facility, and they want to partner with the facility and have the facility be part of their neighborhood party. The facility has partnered with the Omaha Police Department on some activities there as well. Again, high demand in the community for this, no increase in capacities, no additional parking or anything like that, just an addition, no increase in operating hours, so this would, nobody'd be out there after dark, nobody's going to be out there in the wintertime, just in addition to meet the community demand of a facility that's been open for six months and has been very successful and is trying to respond to their customers and provide an opportunity for kids to play outside in a safe, controlled environment. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you put up that rendering that had the fence, show that one there?
Of course, yes.
So you said that the only access is going to be from inside the building to that space, right?
Correct, right, right there.
So, okay, but I don't see any fence on what would, I guess, be the east side of the building?
Along 144th, it doesn't look like it, but that will be a chain-linked fence, yes, six-foot fence all along that area. I know in the recommendation report, it also talked about some landscaping on that side of the property, I think that's more up toward the parking lot, but that is, that's 144th Street there, obviously a very busy street, plenty of noise and activity of its own for folks living nearby, but that is a fence, it's just a little hard to see there for some reason in the rendering.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any other proponents who wish to speak? Are there any opponents who wish to speak on this? Hello?
Hi, good afternoon, my name's Justin Pence, address is 3003 South 144th Avenue. As you mentioned, I live right behind the facility that's looking to be built. I've put a letter together to the board, so I'm not going to go over the entire board again for time's sake, but again, the three main concerns, obviously, noise, again, if it's open, you know, from eight to eight, obviously, they're not always going to be out there eight to eight, but again, eight to eight with dozens, however many, you know, children could be out there playing, you could run into some noise issues, at least for, you know, my own, you know, peace and sanity. Then, of course, there's line of sight, they did mention, again, that they've shown in their new revised drawings that they have, you know, trees and a possible sound barrier. Again, I question, you know, how big those trees are going to be to start with, I mean, how many years is it going to take to mature? Again, where my backyard sits, I can see that also through my, again, through my master bedroom, master bathroom, kitchen, family room, all jotted up, windows against that property, again, within my, again, within my direct eyesight, within my direct earsight. And last, I just want to just bring up, again, if any development does happen, I want to make sure that we're not going to run into any issues regarding flood control or flooding, we've had issues in the past where we've had runoff, where we've had flooding in our backyard, again, due to some of the development, again, we've got the hill, right, obviously coming down into a flat area, there are areas where it does obviously seep out and, you know, and will remove eventually, but again, I don't want to run into any further runoff issues, or again, issues with flooding. So again, I've already put my letter together, I don't want to reiterate every point in it, it's not necessary, but those are my main concerns in terms of sight, sound, and potential runoff with construction.
Okay.
Thank you, Justin.
Any other opponents who wish to speak?
Becky Kane, 14518 Oak Street, I am just up the street from this facility, and just, I have some concerns, I'm not saying I'm for this or against it, but my concerns are that it does state that the current capacity will not increase, the building's capacity is 1,000, they are currently limiting the number of people in there to 300, but which capacity are we saying is not going to increase, the 300 or the 1,000? Also, it states their hours are eight to eight, we were told by the business that they were changing that to eight to seven, but I don't see anything about that. The proposed trees to be planted, according to the layout, show that they would be two feet tall, and the picture sort of looks like, sort of represents that they would be almost like evergreen trees, but they're not, they're like honey locusts and linden and Kentucky coffee trees and white oaks, and how many years is it going to take for those to grow up there? I've lived in this house for 24 years, and throughout that time, we've had issues with the Lund Company, and very few of them have ever been taken care of to the satisfaction of the neighborhood people. We've had issues where there used to be, there is a berm there along the back of our neighborhood, and there were blue spruce trees up there, we've had situations where they've been blown down in storms, we've had situations where some of them have died, last year, they took out a bunch of ones that were not dead but left the ones that were dead, we have broken fences between our neighborhood and the commercial property, and they just don't seem to want to work with us, and so then that just makes me concerned of, are they really going to do what they're saying here in this? So I just want to lay those things out there, and I don't know the answer to this of how much, what kind of barrier, so to speak, has to be between a commercial and a residential neighborhood, but I thought that there was some sort of a barrier that had to be maintained there. And Harvey Oaks, their residents may be for this, but they also are not going to be affected by any noise or any visual, because they are on the other side of, oh, I'm sorry, on the other side of West Center Road. So I just would like to see that if this is to happen, that it's, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and that it is done according to the rules and regulations of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. You okay? Any other opponents who wish to speak? No? Okay. David, would you like to come up and address some of those concerns?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street, thank you for the opportunity to come back up. First, there are a number of statements made about the landlord's maintenance of the property, that's not who the applicant is here, so I can't address those, hopefully those issues don't persist and have been taken care of, of course, but those are two different entities. In terms of runoff and things like this, there are folks here from TD2, professional engineers who have designed this site, they've designed this site, of course, not to create runoff or problems for adjacent properties. The site will be constructed with all of the necessary best management practices, stormwater management practices, anything like that, that would go with any other site. Landscaping also will meet any code requirements and will provide a significant noise and visual barrier. I assume, I don't know, but that these folks probably also have fences in their backyards, and so those would provide a visual barrier as well. Again, and any representations made here, of course, are, go with the permit, and if the facility were to operate out of compliance with its conditional use permit, they would likely hear from the city, and if they continue to do that, wouldn't be operating, so those rules, of course, are very important and guide how any facility operates, and that is certainly the case here. The last thing I'll say is, you know, at least when I, I don't want to offend anybody's age here, but when I grew up, we would go out and ride our bikes in the neighborhood and, you know, go play in the neighborhood. Not everybody has that opportunity today, and there is a real demand and a real need for facilities like this, where kids can play in a controlled environment, where parents can perhaps work while their kids play, but they don't have to keep an eye on them at all times, and, you know, clearly, from the survey that they did, there's a demand, nine out of 10 people who responded said, "Yeah, we like your facility, and it would be great if there were an outdoor area as well." So there's a real need for this in the community, I respect the concerns of the people who are going to live next to it, and might hear some kids out there playing from time to time, or see them out there playing from time to time, although especially on the visual part of it, I don't think that will be the case for very long as those trees grow. So, yes, sir.
Should I think, are the hours going to be eight to seven, or they still stand as eight to eight?
Let me have the applicant come up and answer your question.
And then the other was, what's the capacity? So maybe he can help us out with that?
Yes.
Okay.
One second, thank you. Name and address?
Michael Blatchford, Representative Kip, Kids Indoor Play Park, address 14445 West Center Road, Suite 101. Yes, the, we've, after, you know, meeting with the neighbors, which we've had two meetings to say, "Hey, here's what we'd like to do, can we address any concerns that you have?" We've discussed possibly, you know, lowering our closing time to 7:00 p.m., because most of our, you know, guests are seven and under, eight and under, they're young kids, they're going home at night to eat dinner. Right now, we're open to 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., the reason we did that, new business, not knowing what the demand would be, and, you know, we're slow after 7:00, so we've discussed closing early, adjusting our operating hours from 8:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., but it has not been an official notice as of yet.
Is that every day?
Every day, yeah, seven days a week.
And then there's a capacity question, I guess, she said something about 1,000 a capacity and a 300 capacity?
Yeah, thank you. I don't want to speak exactly to, you know, our building capacity, it's roughly around 1,000, we limit it per play session, just knowing, hey, you know, if there's 1,000 people in there at one time, it would be a bad experience for families. So, yes, that's correct. Roughly, again, we're around 1,000 people per building capacity, but we do limit our play sessions, or two-hour play sessions, and we limit that capacity.
To 300?
To 300.
Okay.
And that capacity limit of 300 that they self-imposed, there's no plan to increase that, even though they would have the additional outdoor area, they would still limit the total capacity indoor/outdoor to 300 per any one session at any one time.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Hey, I used to ride my bike all the time, too, and now I'm lucky to get on the bike.
I need to get out and ride mine more. It's unclear why I have one, but...
And, you know, I personally, you know, this is just me speaking, but I love to hear kids play. I think it's healthy, you know, and they need to be outside more than they're inside, I think, and I just think it's, I love hearing babies cry and I love hearing kids play. I just think that's very healthy, so I'll just make that editorial comment.
Thank you. Any other questions for us? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, hold on. Any other opponents who wish to speak? Okay, Becky, I'll call you back up. I haven't closed the public hearing yet, so I'll call you back up here. Name and address.
Becky Kane, 14518 Oak Street, and I just wanted to address the elevation thing with the fences, yes, I believe every yard along there does have fences, but the elevation is that this commercial district sits above the level of our neighborhood, so having a six-foot fence, you still see everything up there, so I just wanted to clarify that, that the fences really do nothing there, because we can still see the buildings.
Thank you, Becky.
Thanks.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Eric, please.
Yeah, so a few items to note, it was discussed a little bit, but regarding rain runoff, and the applicant did mention the engineering, yeah, so Public Works will require, you know, applicable stormwater management practices for the new site, it doesn't retroactively look at the entire building or the entire parking area to fix it if there's any deficiencies there, but any new development will need to meet those standards from the City of Omaha. And then there was a question about what is the, you know, distance or separation between a commercial and a residential property? So there's a 30-foot landscape buffer yard requirement, so, you know, when you have adjacent commercial zoning with the adjacent residential zoning of this neighborhood, there has to be 30-foot of landscaping, which there is more than that already that exists. So the city has a few comments and conditions in the recommendation report to remedy regarding some of the parking areas and landscaping, we welcome if they want to plant additional landscaping to help, you know, we just want to make sure that they're good neighbors, and if there are problems that arise with noise, just encourage the applicant to, you know, continue to work with neighborhoods and be responsive regarding that. So there will have to be a component of this that goes to the zoning board of appeals, so that is another step in this process. That being said, staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit, subject to the eight conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion? Motion for the approval of the major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC district, subject to the following five conditions.
Eight.
Eight, sorry.
Thank you.
Eight conditions, yeah.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ripper?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Thank you. All right, thanks, guys. All right, next, last item is item 28, KC-798216, the applicant is Project Advocates, the request is approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary educational facilities in the R2 district, property is located in an MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District, location is 8715 Pacific Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Matt Herzog, Project Advocates, 1313 Coming Street, Suite 201. I'm here representing Westside Community Schools, as we're the owner's representative for the Life Complex Project on campus there, it's a privately-funded project to add a new naterium, new gymnasium, and a bunch of other auxiliary spaces for the educational experience of the Westside community. As part of that, we obviously would like to add some signage to the facility, and received back the recommendations. We do understand that there currently is the triangle, commonly referred to as the triangle lot, currently being used for some temporary parking, which is kind of right here. Really, this is a necessity, so the Life Complex Project is right back here. This lot that is normally in use is under construction right now, and there's no way to get safely students to park back there now, so it has been taken offline while that project's been going on. As soon as the project is done, this will be restored to its original habitat, actually better, we're going to landscape that completely as part of, when the district acquired that property, one of the requirements was that it did not become parking, so that is not the long-term intent, is just strictly trying to manage doing a large construction project on a tight site for the district.
Is it parking there now, is it students?
It is students, correct, and the district is managing that. And then one minor adjustment is, in the, we're looking for a waiver to increase to Since the submittal of this, the one sign has changed. It's the smaller sign by the entrance. It was originally, let me zoom out for you. It was originally meant to say this. We would like to change it to that. So it increases about 10 feet, so it would be going to 258, or 258.33 square feet.
The parking issue, this isn't on this project necessarily, but just a question in general, so what's your student, do you know what the student capacity is, enrollment capacity is at?
I don't have exact numbers. I know roughly it is, it is about 2,200 students.
Is, is there enough parking on campus for that many students plus?
So as we dove into this project, that is one thing that we had, Lamper Nielsen is our civil engineering group. They studied that, and there is adequate parking. I think one of the challenges of the site is that maybe the parking's not necessarily where it wants to be, as, you know, the main entrance to the high school is right here. And with new safety protocols for the school, they've really tried to go to one entrance to manage, basically, that the school's secure. Unfortunately, there's a small lot here. The bigger lot is on this side of the school. And since this project has started, one thing they've done is, before the hours of 8:00 a.m., they've allowed students to enter the building on this side to help alleviate that parking. So that by the, by the code, there is an adequate number of parking stalls on campus, but we took 130 offline with this project, and that's really been the challenge as we've gone through.
So, Matt, when is, when will the construction project be done and those 130 stalls brought back online?
If it didn't rain today, they would have poured part of this lot. But November 1st, the pool opens, and that lot will open back up to students at that time.
So, so that's typically all student parking? Or they just dispersed in the neighborhood for the time being? Is that the plan?
Dispersed in the neighborhood, and I think we got about 26 stalls in that little triangle spot.
Okay.
The district has also partnered with the church on 90th and Pacific, right over here, where we are using some of their parking as well to help offer alternatives for people as we go through this project.
How about the, the center to the north of the school there across Pacific Street? Do they park in there at all?
They, they work really hard not to, as countryside does not want them there. And I would say, I have a daughter, she's a junior at the high school, and every week we get the communication from the principal about not parking there.
Yeah, and we already have a parking adjustment for that facility, so we don't want the students parking there either, because they're not factored in.
Yes.
Back to a landscape piece.
That, that is...
Somewhere around there.
Currently the intent, yeah. The one challenge would be, we'd love to have these signs up where we have a donor event November 4th, so we really would like the donors to see where their dollars went. And then that lot would go back, is really our challenge.
Well, how many cars are parked in there?
It's about 26 cars.
I mean, if the sign's that important, I would kick them out and landscape it and say, go find somewhere else to park in the neighborhood for, that's what I would do.
It's, it's obviously a very, a very political charged issue with parking on campuses. We're trying to manage this the best we can for students, staff, and the neighborhood. I know the neighbors do, you know, there's a lot of no parking signs that have been changed there to limit that. And so most of the streets back in this area, you, you can't park in.
Yeah, you're pretty much landlocked, too.
The, the school is rapidly running out of space.
Need another high school? All right, thank you. Are there any proponents who wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Oh, okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, so I guess I'll first touch on the, the change in signage. The applicant has been in coordination with city staff, so we were aware of, of that. We just didn't have time to touch on it in the pre-meeting. So we are acceptable to the change. It will, we'll make sure that we have all those numbers locked down and solidified with the actual Zoning Board of Appeals waiver. So we'll have to make sure to continue to coordinate with the applicant on that. You know, I guess regarding the, you know, the parking, obviously, we don't want the illegal parking there. We, we've started, you know, based on the review of, of this application and noticing that and the changes that have occurred, you know, have begun the code enforcement process. So, you know, I, I guess we want to see it remedied and fixed as, as soon as possible. In fact, condition number one states that, that outlaw must be restored to the original undeveloped state prior to any signed, signed permit being issued by the City of Omaha. So I guess I leave it at that. I understand parking challenges with school and in athletic games, and I'm sure it's going to be hard for football games, even worse than usual. So I understand that, but, you know, obviously, we, we have rules and regulations, so we want to see that, that fixed as, as soon as possible. So that's all that I have to say. Staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit, subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Any questions? Matt, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary educational facilities in the R2 District, subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore? Rupert? Morris?
Yes.
Tondal? Sotolongo? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero?
Thank you. All right, that's all of our items. I will now entertain a motion to approve the pre-meeting and regular meeting minutes from July 2nd meeting. Motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rupert? Morris?
Yes.
Tondal? Sotolongo? Moore? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Tondal? Sotolongo? Moore? Rupert? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero?
Thank you.